Good afternoon and welcome to the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners meeting February 22nd, 2024. And we'll start with the introduction of the diet.
Kristi Marshall, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Sumro Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Judge of Louisville County Administrator.
Attorney Office Prosecutor's Office.
I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. We start each meeting with prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So we will have silent prayer. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse. Commissioner Sumro Dumas.
Yes. Thank you. Now we will go to public comment. We have two cards. We'll go with Julie Calver.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, President Reese, Commissioner Treehouse, and Commissioner Sumro Dumas. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in favor of the funding plan for the renovation reinvention of the Duke Energy Convention Center. We appreciate your support that you've shown for this project all along. We feel like this is the one of the last pieces that we need in order to make this project a reality. And this project is important for our entire county for so many reasons. Bringing conventions is big business for Cincinnati and Hamilton County. And this project, more importantly, is transformational, allowing Visit Cincy to sell the city in a way that we have never been able to do before. We expect to book large, multi-hotel citywide association trade shows and conventions on top of the ones that we already have, on top of the ones we've had in the past that have had to move from Hamilton County because our center wasn't what it needed to be in order to host these in the future. And importantly, there are groups that aren't even considering us because we don't have what they're looking for, the right culture, the right events. We have the right culture and the right events, but not the right assets. And at Visit Cincy, we have never really looked at this project as a renovation. This is more than just tearing out carpet and painting walls. It is a complete overhaul of the convention center and an opening to a new convention district, one of which we've never seen before in this community. And it demonstrates importantly, our community's commitment to hosting conventions and being the perfect Midwest host for conventions. The total economic impact of the Headquarter Hotel in the reimagined Duke Energy Convention Center is $48 million annually. Given this, this center will pay for itself in less than five years. And we're already seeing the reverberations of this. Just yesterday, we had a group in town for a site visit looking to book Cincinnati in '27 or '28. It's expecting almost 5,000 attendees, 11,000 room nights, and the direct spending of this group is expected to exceed $8 million. And in just a few weeks, we have another large group coming to sign their contracts for a 2026 convention, 10,000 people, 20,000 room nights. The transformation is already happening, and we look for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Brendan Cole. He's walking in. Just in time.
You don't typically like to do that, but the elevator was...
It's such a magical thing to see.
I got a nice tour of the building. It's beautiful. Your lobby is fantastic. What you've done to the place is really special. I'm Brendan Cole. I'm the President and CEO of the Cincinnati USA Regional Chamber. I will be very brief. I just wanted to come here and say thank you. I know this is a big day. I've been here before to talk about the convention district project that you all have been involved in. As you all know these details, you have all asked very good and very thoughtful questions about this project. I just wanted to reiterate what a great thing this will be for our community, for our region, and for tourism. The way that you have partnered with the community, the city, the county, working together in partnership with 3CDC, I think has really been something that this entire region can be proud of. And it puts us on great success for additional tourism, additional growth, regional and cultural vibrancy, which we care so much about. This is a huge $200 million renovation project at the convention center. It will catalyze so much more. And obviously, we know about the hotel. But I also want to think about the small businesses that will pop up all around this area as we have more vibrancy, more conventions, more tourism in our region. That adds more vibrancy to our community. Small businesses can take a chance and open up, serve people from all over the world, and it puts us on the map nationally. So as you consider today's financing plan and the step that you will take today, I just wanted to say thank you. I wanted to say I know that this is a big deal for the county, and I wanted to tell you how much this entire region appreciates the big steps that you will take to grow vibrancy and grow our economy here. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. If our Commissioners don't mind, I'd like to advance the by leave. Is that okay? Okay. I'd like to advance by leave number two, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Aludo. I know we had it presented in the meeting on Tuesday, but I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioners. So by leave number two in your packet pertains to the three primary agreements associated with the funding and the revitalization of the Duke Energy Convention Center. I do have one slide on this, Kristi. If you could key that up just again, since we are talking about three separate agreements approved in the same resolution. These agreements are necessary to facilitate but the financing of the convention center project as well as getting the project underway and authorizing the bonds to move forward as well in the financing plan. This was briefed to the Board on Tuesday. As President Reese had indicated, the first agreement is the Senior Cooperative Agreement. This identifies and delineates how the various occupancy tax streams are going to be applied to the project. So you have the county 3.5%, the county 3%, and the new county 1%. And so how those different streams are applied specifically to the project, some of those coming through the county, some of them with the cooperation of the CVB, as well as the cities 1.5% and 1% as well. It also details the cash contributions about the county and the city and the ongoing role of the CFA. The second agreement is the residual transient occupancy tax agreement. So this defines how the occupancy taxes will be used by the parties after use for the defined purposes like debt service and the senior obligations, such as the Shermanville Convention Center. So this is one that the Board is very familiar with because the Board has been very involved with figuring out, at least on the county side, where those dollars will go and what use they will be put towards. And we went through this in much more detail on Tuesday. And third, and finally, is the Development Agreement, which details the role of the county, city, and 3CDC, which will serve as project manager in executing the project. Again, we went through all these in detail on Tuesday. I don't plan to go through them in any more detail today other than to say that you have a resolution that ties all of these together that indicates that it's... The resolution essentially indicates that it's the county's desire to contribute occupancy tax for the purpose of this project, to issue funding and refinancing bonds to fund the project, and talks about the debt issuance through the port and the ongoing role as advisor of the CFA or Convention Facilities Authority. So Commissioners, with that, I turn it back to you. I didn't want to spend too much time on this since we went through it significantly on Tuesday. But again, happy to answer any questions.
I'll open it up. Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you. So this is a big day, as has been mentioned. We've been working towards this day for months and months now, trying to get these agreements together. The city has already passed identical language, and so I'm glad that we are now following suit. And so given this idea that it's taken quite a while and quite a bit of work to get here, I do want to thank our staff, Jeff Aludo in particular. This has been complicated, and it's been time consuming. And so I really appreciate all the due diligence that you've put into this to make sure that the county was well represented at the table and that we are making thoughtful decisions here related to the convention center district, the Headquarter Hotel, and all the rest of what's in front of us today. Thanks to our partners at the CVB and the Chamber for your continued support. As you say, this is kind of a seminal moment, not only because it's related to a part of town that has been underutilized, under-resourced, and I want to say dead, but I didn't want to use that word. But anyway, it has been. There's no activity down in this part of town because the convention center isn't bringing in the kind of business that it could with this renovation. And so I'm very excited, not only that this project is going to move the county forward in that way and provide us an opportunity to bring in some of these larger conventions and larger volumes of conventions, to reinvigorate the region, to bring in resources, to bring in revenue. But we're also doing in a way, and I think this is why it's so seminal, we're doing in a way that is unique to this moment in time where we are collaborating with the City of Cincinnati to do something together that's good for both the region as a whole and also the City of Cincinnati. We have ownership of different parcels in this, what I call a district. The convention center being city land. The Millennium is county land. We've got a garage across the street. We've got Convention Place. We've got the parcel where the Headquarter Hotel is going to be. It's owned by the port. So there are these different pieces, and it could have been that we did this in a very disparate way where we said, oh, we're going to do this. You all do your thing, and we're going to go our separate ways. And that's not what we're doing here. We are doing this collaboratively so that we get not only the biggest bang for the buck, but we do something where all these properties are synergistic with one another, and they create a district that will create some vitality in this part of town. So I don't want to ignore or forget that the state of Ohio is also a partner in the financial stack here, a very important partner, both with the T-MUD money that will go towards the hotel and some of the capital money that we have received in the House or hoping to receive on the Senate side. I have some optimism about that. But they've been a critical partner when trying to put this financial stack together, particularly on the hotel side. So I'm happy to support these resolutions. We've worked a long time on this. We've had many, many conversations about the financial stacks, about the revenue sources, about what it will mean to our region to do the $200 renovation with an eye toward rejuvenating the whole area, part of that being eventually an expansion of the exhibit space, which we know we need to do to further compete in the market that we have, you know, our competitive market, but also to utilize that property to the east that we purchased originally to get all of this moving because nothing was moving when the Millennium stood there. And, you know, it was purchasing that property and demolishing that hotel that spurred all of this activity. And so we were on the lead there. I'm proud of the investment we made. And now that space is going to be used as programmable space for the conventions that come to our area. It'll be an interesting, exciting, and somewhat unique space, I think, for Cincinnati and something for us to brag about. And so it has catalyzed all this other activity where all the dominoes are starting to fall and things are starting to fall into place. So I'm really glad to be a part of it. I'm happy to support it, and I look forward to the potential that is being unlocked in that part of the region and all the revenues and all the vitality that will now come to that region because of the actions of this Board, the city, 3CDC, CVB, the Chamber, and other partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. We've talked about this project for many months, as has been indicated. I feel confident from the questions that I've asked and the answers that I've received that I am now confident and ready to vote for this project. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. I have been consistent on my concerns about the hotel. And this whole thing started with the Millennium before I got here, the buying of Millennium Hotel, which everyone certainly believed needed to be replaced. And it has fostered into something different. My question for the Administrator in this agreement is the hotel. Are we voting on anything on the hotel?
Commissioners, know that there will be a separate development agreement that will come forward later regarding the hotel. So the agreements before today relate to the financing and the execution of the convention center project itself.
So nothing on the hotel. Item E was something I had some concern about. It talks about developmental fee. And in here, it talks about there will be a developmental fee that would go to 3CDC at $2.75 million in addition to the $1 million. So that's 3.75. It mentions that it could come from the TOT bond proceeds, but it says "and/or" city cash funds and county cash funds. So I just wanted to highlight that was something that stood out. I had asked about that before. But it has "and/or" city cash funds.
Yeah, I'm happy to address that.
And county cash funds. Can you address that?
Yeah, so the whole idea here is a common plan of finance between city funds, county funds, bond proceeds. So the development fee is one aspect of the costs of the project. So it could be funded from any of those sources of funds within the... We know it's going to take X amount to complete the project, inclusive of everything. And the revenues going into that include everything from bond proceeds to city and county cash. So at the end of the day, it could technically come from any of those sources.
Okay, so that was different.
Not additional.
Yeah, that was different than yesterday. I mean, Tuesday, it said it was only going to be from bond funds. Now it says county. And county cash funds can be asked about. And then my last piece was the plaza, which is what I'm concerned about over where Millennium Hotel is. On here, it says there would be a separate agreement that will require additional legislative approvals and on the Millennium site. So that's not being voted on today, the plaza area.
That's correct, Commissioners. So the actual development of the plaza, the part of the capital project is a part of this project. So moving forward today, that plaza, that old Millennium site is wrapped into this project, the improvement of it to enable it to serve as a landing spot for conventions and meetings and things of that nature is a part of this. What is to come later is a separate agreement between the county and the city related to the use of that site so that the convention center has access to that program, any other ancillary uses, et cetera. But we have not included that lease as a part of this that will come later.
Okay. My concern has been and will continue to be when we get a finalization on the hotel. And that's not on here today. So I'm going to abstain until we get the hotel. When we get the hotel, then I'll be ready to... I'm concerned that the hotel may be left behind because there's right now currently not a solid plan for the hotel. And that's been my major concern. I'm sure something might be coming, and I'll be waiting until then.
Commissioners, if I could just real quick... I believe Commissioner Treehouse was preparing to call the question, I think. But before you did that, I did... In terms of your thanks to staff, I did just want to acknowledge Assistant Administrator Christman and Assistant Administrator Brugan, who, while I have been heavily involved with this, the sleepless nights and the long days belong mostly to them. So I just wanted to thank them for all their efforts on this, including their colleagues over at the city as well. Cheryl Long, the city manager, and I have worked very cooperatively on this project, but she has a lot of staff working on it as well. And I think as we have talked about this project, one of the beauties of it has been the fact that we have worked with partners between the county, the city, and a lot of the other anchor institutions in this community have come together to make sure that this project works. So I just wanted to thank those individuals and organizations as well.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So I am going to move that we approve of by leave two.
Second. Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Sumro Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Abstention. Okay, if my colleagues don't mind, we do have another by leave that I think I'd like to move up. It's very important, dealing with property taxes, if you all don't mind. We had a good crowd that came down on property taxes. And one of the things that came out of this, one of the things I've been asking, and I know my colleagues probably have as well, what else do we have? We put up $5 million in, I think, 2021 of our ARPA money to help people with property taxes, back property taxes as well as mortgage assistance. And my understanding is we have been close to that amount of money of helping people. And we had about a little bit less than $1 million available a couple of weeks ago. And we had our 513 relief bus out. People came out. The treasurer was there, Jill Schiller. JFS was there. People were applying. And we said, in the meantime, find out what else do we have? Let's comb everything. And today, I'm excited that we have a by leave that will put an additional $700,000. And we're still looking, but additional $700,000 to try to help people right now. I was out in Blue Ash this week, and a lot of the questions was about seniors and, you know, pricing out their house. Whether you're in suburban or urban, Hamilton County, people were very concerned. So with that, Mr. Aludo, I know you had a kind of a brief slide for us to see.
One slide. And Commissioner, I think you stole my thunder on this largely.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was setting it up.
No, it's okay. But as you indicated, we did a couple of weeks ago, we had a large discussion in this room about property taxes and the burdens that people were faced with because of the increasing valuations that have come out and how they were going to respond to that. I think the Board did a really good job of trying to help the group that was here understand what they can do. We can talk about state legislative change. We can talk about other things at a much higher level. But right now, under existing law and existing policy and the existing environment, the Board of Revisions is the best place for someone to go to try to challenge that value and reduce their tax burden. In the meantime, the Board had asked the Administration, what is it that we can do right now? So as Commissioner Reese indicated, we had originally budgeted $5 million in ARPA for mortgage assistance. This is on top of the... I'm not even going to say how much because I just don't know. I can't remember. And ERAP funding that we did, tens and tens of millions of dollars in ERAP funding. But we did put some aside for mortgage assistance, too. We have $727,000 remaining to date through December. Through mid-December, we have helped nine, almost 1,000. By now, it's probably just over 1,000 households with this. So this has been very impactful in the community. So in terms of what we can do right now to help residents, property owners, homeowners of the county would be to infuse that program with some additional funding. The Board had the foresight several months ago to put aside an additional $700,000 to backstop the emergency rental program with ARPA funding. We put that aside, recognizing that we were plowing through the rental assistance funding so fast that we wanted to have a backstop there in case we were going to need it. If we plowed through the amount of existing rental assistance money, we didn't want to go into the general fund, obviously, or tell people that we couldn't meet the obligation. So we put that $700,000 aside. At this point in time, we can affirmatively say we are not going to need that backstop. So JFS has advised that the best thing we can do right now would be to move that $701,000 into the mortgage assistance program, which will now bring that pool back up to around 1.4 million. We will keep looking for additional dollars to put into there as well, Commissioners. But this, I think, is a great thing to allow additional residents the opportunity to access that program and get some mortgage relief at the same time that we try to help them through the traditional process of the Board of Revisions. And in that regard, Commissioner Reese, you had indicated that we're still looking at other alternatives. We are working very closely with community development, which is looking at some funding that they currently have and how they could reprogram those dollars into a contract, most likely with Legal Aid, to assist with funding appraisals for individuals looking to get appraisals done for the Board of Revision process. That is still in the works. I anticipate that coming forward in early March. But that will be the second of the two primary things I think we can do at this time. So Commissioner Reese, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up, Vice President Treehouse. Yeah, thank you. And thank you to the Administration once again for doing this. And we heard quite a bit of frustration amongst property taxpayers about their property taxes going up. And while we have no control over that and it was not something that the Board can control, we did want to try to be helpful to those that are facing significant increases in their property tax bills that may have a very limited ability to pay for those increases. And so we tossed around a couple of ideas. Thank you especially to Holly Christman for working through the ARPA numbers to find these dollars that we had set aside for ERAP that are now going to be made available for the mortgage assistance. I think this is an absolutely appropriate approach for those dollars. I do want to note a caveat that this is part of a much larger conversation about what is going to fall down from what we have allocated related to ARPA. So all of the different priorities that we have funded in the past, this will be the second or third time that we look at what is left. Some of the agencies didn't spend as much. Yeah, some of the dollars went unspent. And so we will look at those, and it's going to be much smaller than it has been in the past because we're moving through this process. But this is outside of that because of the emergency nature of what's happening in the community and what we heard from people when they came in and testified to us. So I'm excited that we were able to move as quickly and as nimbly as we did on this one. And also, I was going to ask about the assistance for appraisals for legal assistance, trying to navigate the Board of Revision process. We heard a lot of that also from the citizens that came in, that it's a confusing process, and sometimes people aren't comfortable going through that process because it's intimidating. And so with Legal Aid at their side, whether it is just helping navigate the process or helping them with a reappraisal so they can build a case when they go into the BOR, I think that's a really good use of county dollars and just something else we can do to help people that are facing these higher property tax bills. So I'm really grateful for the pretty swift action of Administration on this because the BOR process, the signing up, will end in March. And so we are working against a deadline here. So very happy with this outcome. Thank you. Thank you to the staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
Thanks. A couple of things I'd like to say to the staff, Administration, and words cannot express for me the satisfaction that we have found some money. And so we want to, as you were saying earlier, find more and more money. I have a question about the selection process and how people will not only be selected, but how will they be made aware of this additional money? Because we certainly want to be transparent with it, and we don't want anyone to think we're having favoritism toward one group or one family or whatever. So I had written to... I don't know if Holly's over there, but I had written a note to Holly. She might have already answered me. You did? Okay. Is it up? Can she?
Yes, come on up. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Really quickly, in general, the selection process for the mortgage assistance program is first of all all listed on 513 Relief website. So anyone who is seeking assistance should go directly to that webpage, or they can call 211, and United Way can assist them. But in general, the requirements are 300% of the federal poverty level. It has to be an owner-occupied home. It can't be a second home or an Airbnb. And we will provide up to six months of past-due mortgage, property tax delinquencies, or utilities.
Okay. So how are we, thank you for that, how are we going to let those that don't use computers, don't listen to this meeting, how are we going to make them aware?
We will, that's a great question, thank you. We will let all of our partners know, such as Legal Aid, Community Action Agency, all those kind of on-the-ground organizations, know that we have allocated additional money for this program after today's meeting, assuming it passes, so they can let their clients know as well.
Okay, very good, thank you. And Jeff, you mentioned that planning is looking at some possible additional monies in March possibly. So I was going to ask about this money. When are we going, we're going to launch it right now if it's passed today?
Yeah, this money, if the board approves it today, we will get this infused into the mortgage program immediately.
All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Great, great job. We have a public hearing and we are behind, I'm sorry. Sidewalk replacement program.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Lisa Dergar, I'm with the Engineers' Office. I am here on behalf of Engineer Beck, he is at a conference right now. So this is the second public hearing for our annual sidewalk repair and replacement program. Every year, we inspect about one-sixth of our sidewalks on our county roads, and if they are deficient, then we will put them in a contract together to be publicly bid to be repaired. So this is just an opportunity for anybody that is affected by those. I think we have about 60 parcels, and these are in Green and Dale High Townships for this year's contract, to speak on their behalf if they have any questions.
Okay, open it up, any questions? Anybody, is anyone here to speak on this? Okay, okay. I'll open it up, Vice President, do you have any questions? Commissioner Dumas?
Only question, this is a yearly process, so in '25, all the sidewalks will be different? Or if you, you're planning on completing all of them?
Yes, so the sidewalks that we're doing in the '24 program were actually inspected in '23.
Okay.
And letters were sent out to property owners, they can fix it themselves if they want to upfront, and if they don't, that's when we put it on this contract. So next year, we will inspect a different sixth of sidewalks. So we just do that every six years, so we keep up with it.
So you're thinking that within that year, you can complete all these 60 parcels?
Yes, yes. Like, once, yeah, we'll be coming back to the board once this passes to put this out to bid, and then we'll award the contract to the bidder, and then usually, I'd say, what, a couple of months, three or four months to get that completed?
Thank you. Okay, thank you, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'll go to our comments. I'm going to start them off today. I attended and was also one of the speakers on behalf of our board at the Metro Transit Infrastructure Fund signing ceremony, I believe Vice President Drew House was there as well. It was exciting to see $42 million allocated to communities across Hamilton County. And they had a signing, and you saw everyone there getting funding for infrastructure and sidewalks. That's very important with issue seven, because we had, as our county, we had aging infrastructures throughout the county. And so everyone from City of Cincinnati, of course, our county engineer, they won some of the grants, but then also so many different communities, it was great to see a lot of them represented there. I don't want to name all of them, but because I know I leave somebody out, but I do want to just highlight some that I do remember, Anderson Township and Colrain Township, Springdale and St. Bernard, Wyoming, Woodland, Lincoln Heights. So you had everything from villages to townships that were in the room, Silverton, and so many others. So I want to give a big shout out to Darryl Haley and his team over at Sorta Metro, because it was, I guess, about this time, they were looking at putting it on the ballot, and would it work? Would you get, will anyone really see those dollars? And a lot of those projects would not have been done without this. So I wanted to give a big shout out to Sorta. Also, was at the 513 Relief Bus in Walnut Hills, at the Tavern House, it was packed, still people getting services, and they were doing glue-close checks, which was really good. So I was excited to see that, and you can go to 513relief.org to find out everywhere we're going. But we will be March 1st at UC Blue Ash from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and then March 5th at Glenn Carter Lodge in Dale High. And that will be from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So you can go to 513relief.org to find out all of the stops. Also, I met with Merrimott Village Administrator Randy York to discuss several park projects and funding resources, and I also talked with Jeff, and we'll send them to Holly, they've got some great projects going on out there. We've supported some of them, and I know the state is supporting some of them as well. So just connecting to make sure that they're connected to all grants that might be available so they can apply in a timely fashion. And then also, I know Vice President Drew House, I won't take away from her thunder with the White House office visit today on National Drug Control and Policy Roundtable with Dr. Gupta, I was happy to be a part of that, but you'll hear more from her on that. And then it is, we do have a primary, we've got voting going on. Early voting has already started, and you can vote at the Board of Elections, and yesterday was early voting, I voted. And the election day is March 19th, so I want to keep reiterating that to people. Because when I went over there, it was like, easy parking, nobody was there. And you could get right in and get right out, so I wanted to emphasize that. So that's all I have. And we had a great Black History Program on Tuesday, honored some phenomenal people and organizations, it was just a great, great thing. And I'm still getting positive comments from people saying how great it was down here. So, Vice President Drew House.
So, yeah, I'm going to duplicate some of what you said, because I, too, was going to talk about the Metro Infrastructure Fund signing ceremony. I think this is the third year that this money has been released, this was part of the levy, as you say, that was passed by the voters in Hamilton County. 25% of that levy was designated for infrastructure, and so these communities are now making application for those funds. I think all of them that applied, that were eligible, got funded. So that goes for the smaller jurisdictions, the county didn't get 100%, the city didn't get 100%, but other than that, I think everybody got what they asked for, at least part of it. So it was great to see everybody in the room, as you say, townships, villages, cities, were there, represented by either elected officials or staff, and these dollars really do help in these communities where they don't have other resources to do these kind of infrastructure projects in their communities. So I was very grateful to be part of that, and I want to give a shout out to Darryl Haley as well, and Troy Miller, who's in the back of the room, for all the work and pulling that together. I also wanted to recognize that we had a wonderful Black History Month recognition ceremony here, that we do annual, thanks, I think, to Commissioner Summer Dumas, who started it a couple of years ago, but it really is a wonderful time to recognize individuals in this community that have given so much, and I really thought it was a wonderful celebration. I also talked to Taylor High School today, which was kind of fun, a bunch of high school students. And it's so interesting when you go into a room like that, and they say, well, you know, what's the most important thing that Hamilton County does? And it gives you, I mean, we do a lot of stuff, and it's really hard to say, oh, well, let me think about that. But the thing that was most relevant to everybody in the room was MSD and our sewer system, which I noted, because that's something, it's a huge thing, we don't always talk about it, but if that infrastructure breaks down, we've got problems. So I was talking about the utilities and some of the work we do there with waste disposal, recycling, MSD, other more glamorous things than that, but it was a little bit of a moment where I had to catch myself and say, well, we do some pretty important stuff. And then lastly, I will talk about the visit from the White House. So Dr. Raul Gupta was here, he is the Director of the Office of Drug Control Policy for the federal government. I met him in DC about a year ago, he's interacted with other people from this area, and so decided to bring his team down for a visit to better understand what we're doing in Hamilton County related to the addiction crisis that is present throughout the country. And so I think part of it is that we've got a unique approach that's very collaborative through the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition, where we brought people from different disciplines together to try to save lives and get people into treatment. But the other thing that is notable is that the trend line for the county continues to go down when it comes to overdose deaths in this county. Many parts of the country are seeing increases in overdose deaths, related primarily to fentanyl being mixed in with a number of different drugs. But in Hamilton County, we've seen a second year of decreased numbers. So I think it's, the community is to credit for that, or our approach to it, kind of collectively, reducing stigma and making sure people know that there is treatment available for them, and we want them to go into recovery. And then some of these, the things that are being set up, like the Recovery Friendly Workplace that we have adopted here in Hamilton County, and other things related to housing and transportation, to break down barriers for people that are in recovery, that want to stay in recovery. And so it was a wonderful visit, kind of put us on the national stage, and I hope Dr. Gupta stays in touch, and I did offer that if there were any other areas that wanted to get a better understanding of what we're doing here in Hamilton County, we are certainly open to that. And the whole HCR, the group was there, all the experts were sitting around the table informing Dr. Gupta on how we are doing this work here in Hamilton County. So grateful to all of them for it. Thank you.
Great job. I'm concerned about you starting off with MSD with the students.
No, no, no. Well, what's most relevant?
We do a lot of fun stuff, too.
Everybody had an interaction with the county this morning, everybody.
Really, yeah.
I'm just saying.
I'll go to Commissioner Dumas, and again, congratulations.
That was their reaction, too, by the way.
Congratulations on the Black History Program, which is a lot more exciting.
I know.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I participated in the White House briefing, as I do after our Thursday meetings. Nothing really outstanding, they're still allocating lots of money, you can go on their website and look specifically where the grants are, as I mentioned before. I met also with Barton Mitchell of the Community Builders, he's out of Boston, and he's looking at a plan possibly of development in the West End. And also, I had a meeting this morning as it relates to branding and looking at our logo and how we may want to, and I'm sure we want to upgrade our logo, very interesting meeting, and they are really incorporating everything from each commissioner to try to come up with a final project, product. And then the divert webinar was this morning, kind of overbooked, and Kim sat in, Kimberly Lee, my administrative assistant, sat in on that, I got in on the end. And in the process, I also had a meeting with, it was in between the branding meeting and the divert meeting. So the end part that I saw was very good, I saw also that they had launched a new area for divert, which is out in Colrain Township. And that launch took place on February the 1st. As far as the White House office meeting that you guys spoke about earlier, my Chief of Staff sat in on that. I also met Dr. Gupta when I was in DC, very interesting, man, I'm sure the meeting was quite interesting. I just wanted to go into a couple more items. As you mentioned about the Black History Month, one of our, I think, I won't say one of our best, but just one of our exciting, different celebrations, and I want to thank my three recipients, especially Ruby Shuttlesworth-Bester, who travels a lot, still civil rights icon, activist, and still travels, but was able to come and see us. And we were in the midst of history on that day, for sure. And lastly, I want to say that Metro rocks, did not make it to the Tuesday get-together, but that issue seven that the residents passed, I will tell you that Metro is doing so much for this community, and they are listening to what our concerns are, what the residents' concerns are, and really, really making a difference. So I just want to thank Troy, who's in the back, who doesn't want to speak, and Darryl Haley, they are doing great work, and specifically about Troy, I want to bring up that my Chief of Staff, Bishop Hilton, had brought up a concern as it relates to the Greyhound Station closing down, and how he had observed people dragging their luggage up the hill, the Galbert Hill. And so we mentioned it to Metro, and they look at an assessment and a survey to see if it was comparable to add additional bus service. And we got a report back from them, which I can share with my colleagues, how the ridership has increased exponentially in that area. So did you want to speak to it, Troy, at all?
I would.
Wait a minute, he didn't fill out no card. He didn't fill a card out.
It's part of my comments.
So you had asked back in August about picking up a bus stop there. So we looked at, and we added that bus stop, and as of end of December, I believe it was 34.8 riders getting off, or on there every day. So that's been a big jump from that spot, so.
What has been a jump, do you remember?
It was that when we really started, we didn't have a stop there. Now we have a stop at the Greyhound spot, so.
And that's great.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
I sent you guys all the report on updated where we are from since January.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
If you like on one of our Tuesdays, maybe they can, if you want more extensive, Commissioner Dumas?
No, I have the extensive.
No, it's if you wanted it presented more extensive, we can on a Tuesday, if you'd like to.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. That'll end my report.
Okay. All right, Mr. Ludo.
Thank you, commissioners. Have two by leaves for you today in your packet, we've actually, we had four, we've done two of them. The first is by leave number three, this is the appointment of special counsel for municipal court judges, given a conflict of interest and representation with the prosecutor's office. This is the appointment of Linda Weber, from Montgomery Johnson, to represent the municipal court judges in that case. Administration recommends approval.
I'll open it up, Vice President Drew House.
Commissioner Dumas?
No questions.
Okay. What by leave number did you say?
I believe that was number three.
An old one, three, okay. I'll make a motion to approve by leave three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, by leave number four, this relates to the ongoing pre-renovation projects that we have going on down at Paycor Stadium. You'll recall that as part of that program, the board had included a line item to assess the scope and the timing of turf replacement at Paycor Stadium. The recommendation came back that while the entirety of the field, from top to bottom, I won't go into the details, but while the entirety of the field didn't need to be replaced at this time, and in fact, probably wouldn't make sense to replace at this time, the top layer, the turf and the drainage layer, was, as it's six years old, was one of the older in the league, it was a, is a, made of a turf-type surface that the NFL is moving away from. So the item before you today is moving to a monofilament versus a slit film turf. This is being purchased off of state contract, which means it has been competitively bid through the state. It was on your agenda, say for $981,000. We do know that six other stadia in the NFL have this exact type of product. We also know that several others this offseason are moving to replace with this same type of product. So this is, there is a movement away, I believe that Paycor may be one of, if not the last slit film turf in the NFL, so that there is a move away from that product to more natural grass, monofilament, et cetera. So the administration does recommend approval. This is a part of the pre-renovation project, previously approved by the board, so this is within that $39 million budget, this does not put us above that. In fact, this number is consistent with the placeholder we put for that project, recognizing that at the time, back in December, we weren't quite sure what the scope and timing would be. But given that we're not going to be replacing the entire thing top to bottom, this is consistent with the budget that we've placed in there.
Okay. Vice President Drew House.
No questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
No questions.
I just have one question on this particular, this is still within the old existing contract, this is not new, just so people who, because I know that the contract will be expiring, but this is not it, so this, people know that this is.
You say contract, you mean the lease?
The lease, I'm sorry, the lease with the, so people don't feel like this is a new thing. This is part of the old lease that.
That is correct.
Part of it, okay. And then you're saying that you're doing this because as we go into a possible new lease, then we have to look at a bigger deal with the field or?
Yeah, yes, we will, I think we'll have to start looking at the timing for the next replacement of the turf, but that should probably coincide more with larger capital renovations going on as a part of that, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve by leave four.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
No further by leaves, commissioners.
Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda. Mr. Ludo.
Move quickly here, you caught me off guard.
Oh, sorry.
We normally have a regular agenda, so, okay, I'll walk through the consent agenda. Now briefly, commissioners, item number one, the consent agenda is the authorization of ITB 114-23. This is for an electrical arc flash mitigation safety project at 800 Broadway. Item number two is the award of an invitation to bid to Barrett Paving, $350,000. Item number two is the award of an invitation to bid to Barrett Paving, $350,000 for the Engineers' Asphalt Project, I believe the Engineers' Office has, has left, but this is their annual asphalt bid. Item number three is Resolution P031-24, this is three 2025 International cab, HV 607 cabin chassis as replacements for the Hamilton County Engineers Department at $291,586. Item number four is Resolution Number P032-24, this is the purchase of a Harley-Davidson motorcycle for the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office at $27,811. Item number five is the purchase of two Dodge Chargers as replacements for the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office at $67,906 total. There is a resolution here in a then-and-now for a Job and Family Services contract for WebFeat, that's W-F-E-A-T, Complete Inc., for services at Job and Family Services at We have two, these next two items relate to the process for selection of architectural services under county facilities. The first one is for the selection of Champlin Architecture for General Professional Architecture Design Services. The second, which is item number eight, relates to the selection of THP for Structural Design Services. There is still one additional agreement coming forward on this, Commissioners. The, the group, the selection committee had chosen to break down the general architectural contract this time, I believe for maybe the first time to, to break that general architecture work-up with two firms, and we're still working on the contract with the second firm, so I just wanna let you know that this is not the final bid, you'll hear on that. Item number nine is the execution of two purchase orders for $297,803, this is for supplies for our mass care trailer operated by EMA, it is also for the upgrade of elevators at Great American Ballpark through Fujitec. Item 10 is Resolution, so then-and-now for consulting services with Deborah Doob through Job and Family Services at $3,062. Item number 11 is a purchase order, this relates to cabling and technology services through Cincinnati Bell Technology Services at Paycor, this is another item that is part of the pre-renovation projects that we're doing for technology improvements at Paycor. We have a resolution of, item number 12, I'm sorry, that was $818,607, item number 12 is a resolution appointing a county 911 coordinator, as the board is aware, this date has come down with some additional legislation relating to the ongoing oversight, maintenance, and submittal of county 911 plans. We are currently working through some appointments that the board will have to make, but in the meantime, the board has to appoint a 911 coordinator, this appoints Director Andy Knapp into that position, the board is very familiar with Mr. Knapp. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing a waste reduction grant with the Village of Merrimott for $2,337, this is for waste reduction at their city pools and plastic reduction. Item 14 is approving a tentative collective bargaining agreement with the Greater Cincinnati Building and Construction Trades, this is the painters, plasters, plumbers. Then we have several JFS items, item 15 is for independent living services, this is with Hern House. Item 16 is for an agreement with Juvenile Court for entries for magistrate hearings for child support enforcement orders at 1.61 million. Item 17 is a, an agreement with the United Way for Youth Advisory Board Services at $28,048. Item 18 is an agreement for independent living services at 1.1 million with Changing the World LLC. And item number 19 is a grant amendment with the New Life Furniture for $200,000, this is for Furniture Bank Distribution Services. Finally, Commissioners, we have items 20 and 21, these are both the submittals of oaths of office and official bonds for two Hamilton County Park Board Commissioners submitted by the court, there's two members here, these would just be accepting for the record, Commissioners. And then we have item number 22, which is the monthly investment report for the treasurer, and we have two travel requests, both from the coroner, two employees to Atlanta, Georgia, and two employees to Rosemont, Illinois. And that completes the consent agenda today, Commissioners.
Okay, I will open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
Yeah, thank you, I just have one question about item 17, this is the one talking about the youth advisory board services, I'm very excited about the opportunity to engage youth in some of the work that's going on related to JFS, can you dig into that a little bit and help me better understand what these dollars are for?
Commissioner, I'd be happy to, I would first, although defer to Laura Wolf, who I believe is on with us online through Zoom, and since, because you have Laura on, so since she's stuck with us the whole way, might as well turn it over to Laura.
Yeah, I'm here. Could you repeat the question, I am so sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at item number 17, this is the one in partnership with the United Way on behalf of JFS for youth advisory board services, super excited about engaging youth in this way, and just wanted to understand this a little bit better.
Absolutely. We've partnered for actually many years with United Way for our work on our youth advisory board. This is an agreement because they've actually brought a young person who has emancipated from the child welfare system in Hamilton County, who is providing leadership to this youth advisory board, and the board members are actually young people who are either currently involved or have been involved in the past with our child welfare system. So they act as an advisory board to us, they've actually partnered on a couple RFPs that I've been a part of, so it's, it's very exciting work to have young people with lived experience, to give them voice into the, the services and things that we are doing in our, for our child welfare families.
Yeah, great, great, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Dumas? Thank you. So Laura, I'm wondering, is the $28,000 completely salaries, or what?
Yes, it is salary for the young person to do this.
So I have a question for you on 18 and 19, Changing the World and New Life Furniture appears to be new to me, we're always wanting to know if we have new providers or not, is, are these ones we've used before?
Well, actually, Changing the World has been a partner for independent living services for many years, they have a great program, working with, with our young people in the independent living service, that they are local, and it is minority-run, although it is a nonprofit, it, that it is run by individuals who are women and are minorities, so that's an exciting program. And New Life Furniture is a new program that we've been, we are bringing to the table for our kinship families, this is bringing new and, and gently-used furniture that we're purchasing, and they're actually delivering to the families and putting them together to make sure that they're safe in the homes.
Okay, thank you, that's great, that's all I have.
Okay, I make a motion to approve and accept for the record items one through 23.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas.